Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I'll call this regular City Council meeting to order. Do you would all rise for the invocation which tonight will be led by Deacon John Dunlop from St. Sebastian Catholic Church? And remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance which will be led by Councilmember McPartlin.
Good evening. Let us bow our heads and pray for God's blessing. Oh God, a heavenly Father. We come before you with praise and thanksgiving. And we thank you for the great gift of the jewel of the city of Sebastian. We thank you for the great privilege of being here in this beautiful, beautiful place. And we know that we're in good form because we're with good people. Lord, send the power of your Holy Spirit upon all who govern us. Give them the wisdom of Solomon that they may lead us to better and better and better places. And Lord, this day, many great things will be discussed. And so thank you and praise you. We ask all of this in the name of Jesus the Lord. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Great, thank you, Deacon. Roll call, please.
Mayor Hill.
Here.
Vice Mayor Kitchen.
Here.
Councilmember Dodd.
Here.
Councilmember Avino.
Here.
Councilmember McPartlin.
Here.
Thank you.
All right, this evening there are no agenda modifications, are there, council?
No.
All right, hearing none. No proclamations, awards, or brief announcements. Does anyone have any announcements? All right, that'll lead us to item 7, the consent agenda.
Move approval of item 7A and B. Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Thank you. Item 8, committee reports and appointments. This evening we have a presentation by the Natural Resources Board Chairman Nicole Moszblak for a Sustainable Sebastian Initiative. Ms. Moszblak. Hi.
Hi, good evening.
Good evening.
So I am Dr. Nikki Moszblak. I am the Chair of the Natural Resources Board, and I live at 873 Gilbert Street. Thank you for your time. As Chair, and we have representation of other Natural Resources Board members here, we feel that the six tasks we've outlined in our submitted resolution are a strong foundation for creating what we hope to be a very sustainable Sebastian. With your support, the Natural Resources Board would like to champion this initiative to conserve and protect our unique natural resources, and ultimately help save the money, help save the city money in operational costs as well. In addition, we've also included for your review our Natural Resources Board's Enabling Ordinance in your agenda packet. Our board is comprised of knowledgeable and very dedicated residents who collectively would like you to know that they want to be more involved in decisions regarding the protection of our, again, very unique and special natural resources. So I thank you for your time and your consideration very much.
All right, thank you very much. We really appreciate the work done on the Natural Resources Board. It's a fantastic board that we have here in Sebastian, and we're very pleased with what you guys have done for us.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, appreciate it.
All right. At this time, we have an appointment to make. We have one applicant for the term to expire July 1st, 2020, on the Natural Resources Board. It's an unexpired alternate member position, and council, I will go ahead and nominate Jessica Lovell.
Second.
All right, seeing none. Thank you very much. We appreciate your service to the city of Sebastian. There are no public hearings this evening. There's no unfinished business at this time. It's time for public input. If anyone from the public wishes to bring something forward to this council that is not currently on the agenda, now would be the time.
Yes, sir. Hi, my name is Robert Sissio. I reside at 1597 East Lake Lane. And I reached out to Jeanette Williams and took some pictures of my property, and I wrote a letter, and it was all in your mailboxes there, so I didn't know if you guys, I'm sure you got a chance to take a peek at that. And that hill has just been, it's, it's just killing me, that hill. I pulled up my back three times on it. I can't get anybody to cut it. And so I've been, you know, what ended up happening, I was gonna move forward with it, with the piping and everything, I agreed to that, but these junction boxes that they were, it was so expensive, it was like $5,000 for a junction box, and then they started making them on-site later on after this whole thing happened. And so I was just wondering if we can go back to, you know, because now I hear that Phil, he's a very nice guy, he told me that they're not burying the pipe anymore. And then when I talked to another gentleman, I'm not positive his name right now, but he told me that nothing was done, you know, in 20 years, no one said nothing, but I bought that house, it was boarded up, and no one really lived there. A guy came down fishing from Jersey every, you know, maybe twice a year. So I don't think he complained about it, so I don't, you know, what happened with that, but I just hope you guys can help me with that hill, because it's like, I'm waiting for it to snow and go snowboarding down it, and I don't know if you guys got a chance to take a peek at it, so. It's an eyesore in the neighborhood, too, and it's, it's, so I just, they were gonna, you know, they canceled this quarter round, they're not doing that no more, but, you know, I just can't cut that property there. It's 100 feet by 20 feet, so it's a lot. And I just don't know why, you know, if you could pass something, I wrote something here, how, how could this pass if it leaves us unable to properly care for the yard? I mean, you can't push a lawnmower on it. I had a German fellow, nice guy down the street, he wanted to put spikes in the lawnmower tires, and then he said, "We can roll it down and pull it back up with a rope and do the next section like that." And I'm, so I just, I'm just, I just, I wish, I hope you guys can help me with it, so I don't, I'm willing to pay some money towards it, so. But, and now, what ended up happening, when they did some work to it, and I had a side driveway put in, and when the guy was doing it, he put, you know, it was a 20-foot piece of length, I said, "Aren't you gonna put some kind of pitch on it?" He said, "No, it'll flow fine." And so now what happens, so if this is the pipe, like this right here, that water has to come, I never had no water before that this pipe went in, and now the pipe's in there, the water's gotta come all the way up to here, two inches above, and then it starts flowing out. So then I got standing water, tap holes, smell, you know, you know how it goes, so there's a couple of parts of Sebastian, but I noticed that you guys are correcting a lot in Sebastian, so I know you guys have been doing a good job with that. But, did any of you guys were able to go by and take a peek at it, or? Yeah. I finally was able to get some bushes up there because I just didn't know it was gonna happen, and they're, you know, but I end, I end up losing a whole good piece of my property right there, because it just, you know, it should've been graduated from the house down. If you see each corner, like where my house is, if you look at the other neighbors in there, it's pulled down evenly, but, you know, I got a nice flat spot, and then boom, I'd rather have something, you know, graduate a little bit so I can handle it alone more, so.
Okay. Well, thank you for bringing this to us tonight. We'll have some discussion with the city manager and see what we can do.
Okay.
Anyone else have anything to bring us this evening? Yes, ma'am.
Hi, I'm Andrea Ring, 407 Quarry Lane. I am currently serving on the Budget Committee, so thank you all for being up there. And I appreciate the people who are currently serving, and I wish you well in the next election and hope you get to serve again. Thank you. But I would like to call your attention to the I was previous Chair of the Natural Resource Board. In when I was Chair, you all, you and Frank, stood there and stopped everything we were trying to do. I am hoping that you let this city employee who is now representing the Natural Resource Board, let them do their job. Let them do a good job. Let them have their way. You stopped us. The only thing you would let us do is the oyster bed, and then we had a hard time with that because you did that all behind scenes. We need to let this current person, whoever is doing the board, to let them do their work and come back, because then they'll come back with good stuff. We, we did sewer when we were on the board, and we finally got the sewer line changed over, so that was positive. I had to go down to county to talk to the county people, but we, we just need to let these people do their job and work. I'm currently on budget, so thank you. We got streets done, so thank you for that, rather than the extra money going to airport and the golf course. We got extra money for streets, so thank you.
All right, thank you very much.
Hope to see you next year.
Thank you, ma'am. Anyone else have anything to bring forward this evening? All right, seeing none. We will move on to new business. Item 12A is a resolution number R-19-29. Mr. Stokes.
A resolution of the city of Sebastian, Indian River County, Florida, vacating a portion of a certain easement on Lot 6, Block 273, Sebastian Highlands, Unit 10, providing for conflicts therewith, providing for recording, providing for scrivener's errors, providing for an effective date.
So, Mr. Mayor, if I may, this project has been, this individual had put this permit, put this pool in without a permit. He had put an above-ground pool, underground without a permit, and a deck without a permit. There was a violation notice given to the property owner. The magistrate had given him, I think it was 60 days, to bring it into compliance, and part of that, in order to be in compliance to get the building permit, he had to have this easement abandonment completed, and he had some challenges, the property owner had several challenges with Florida power and light, but they have gotten all that signed off on. They're currently, since I think October 2nd, a $50 a day fine until they get into compliance, and there's some fees, administrative fees that also need to be paid. But none of that can be corrected unless he either, A, removes the pool and the decking, fills the hole in, or this abandonment's done, he pays the fees for the permit, and proceeds to get the inspections and the approvals. So staff is asking the council to consider the abandonment of the easement so we can progress to bring this to conclusion, and if not, then we'll have to move it forward for removal of the pool and decking.
Okay, is the applicant here?
I do not believe so. I do not see him.
Well, I have some questions for the applicant probably before I could go forward with this. In reading the documents from the special magistrate, I think the special magistrate was very clear in the requirements to bring this property basically up to code, and that's with inspections, and obviously this abandonment, it's a part of it. I just don't know, I mean, I, quite frankly, council, I would have trouble going forward with anything on this without the applicant being here to answer any questions on this.
Well, I, I have an issue with it, and a lot of it just goes back to the fact that the property owner, although I don't think the person doing the work is the owner of the property, right, it's, but they, they were told by the building department not to install a pool because they were, it was gonna be in a right-of-way, and they chose to do it anyway. And basically, from what I read in this document, is they, they told the building department they didn't need a permit, and they were gonna do it anyway. So they, they got themselves kind of in a pickle when they did that, and now...
But that was a pool company that did it, right? It wasn't the actual resident?
No, the owner did it.
There's no pool.
He went in a backhoe and dug it, and, is that correct?
Mr. Mayor, if I may, it was the, the boyfriend of the daughter of the owner that lives in the residence, is my understanding, is the one who installed the pool. It wasn't a contractor.
I got you. Well, here's the, here's the problem that we have, all right? There's no permit pulled, they were told they needed a permit. They were told that they wouldn't be compliant if they put the pool in, in the first place. There's a shed that's also encroaching. Now, I have no beef with providing the abandonment, especially since we said they could put the shed there based on an earlier survey. So I have no problems with the abandonment, but I, I do have problems with abandoning, of the abandonment, if the owner has no desire to do what else the magistrate has required. And without that person here to tell me that that's going to be done, and tell me how that's going to be done, I find it difficult to move forward and do anything on this.
I'll agree with that. I would make a motion that we postpone this to the next meeting.
Now, is a postponement, is what we should do, or?
Table?
Trick denial. Now, denial, we could table it.
Own on it, then it's done, right?
Well, if we deny it, it's denied. And then, and then we go into pulling the pool out and all of that, which, which is something I don't wanna have to see. I don't, I'm not, I'm not interested in, if this pool is safe and, and, you know, whatever, I mean, this person just needs to bring it into compliance, and I would agree with the special magistrate that there is a way for this pool to remain in place, but I don't see how there's a way for the pool to remain in place if the applicant doesn't wish to come and answer any questions about it. So I would, I would second your motion to table this until the next meeting. If the applicant wishes to show up to that meeting, then I suppose we could proceed.
Well, one thing about the table, the $50 a day fine that the special magistrate levied start, start at 10:01, so if we table it, then between now and the next meeting, they're, they're incurring a $50 per day fine on that.
It, it is continuing to accrue. That is something that they can seek relief on, and council will have the ability to grant and have relief. Yeah, I mean, at a later time, we can deal with the, with the financial parts of it, but I don't, I don't see any, you know, I personally need someone to tell me that this is what I'm going to do to this so that we can help and give them some relief. My goal, again, is not to see them have to remove the pool, but to actually understand that they know that there are rules and that there's reasons for these codes, and to make sure that they're compliant. It's a safety issue, so.
Anything else from council? Anyone from the public have anything they'd like to say on this subject? All right, seeing none. Anything else from council? All right, roll call, please.
Vice Mayor Kitchen.
Yes.
Councilmember Dodd.
Yes.
Councilmember Avino.
Yes.
Councilmember McPartlin.
Yes.
Mayor Hill.
Yes.
Motion carries, thank you.
Thank you. Item 12B, resolution number R-19-30, supporting the Sustainable Sebastian Initiative. Mr. Stokes.
A resolution of the city of Sebastian, Indian River County, Florida, supporting the Sustainable Sebastian Initiative, providing for scrivener's errors, providing for an effective date.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Carlyle.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, this was an item that Councilmember Dodd had asked to be put on the agenda. Ms. Hagler's here, she's been working with the Natural Resources Board to help develop this resolution, and some of these target goals, milestones that we'd like to see the city initiatives that we'd like to see the city go. This is not a regulatory resolution, it's more, let's see how we can do better for the environment, what things we can do. Ms. Hagler can ask any specific questions, because she's attended all the meetings, and I know there's members from the Natural Resources Board here that may want to comment on it, and obviously there's questions council may have, so.
All right, thank you, council. You have any, anything you wanna discuss on this?
Yeah, I, first I wanna congratulate the Natural Resources Board. I've watched their meetings with a great deal of interest. And not only are they very qualified, I don't think within our budget we could afford to hire them. So we, we have a unique group of individuals that do that. Right now, as this, as this is presented to us, it is a task list for the Natural Resources Board to accomplish. There's six basic tasks, they're very encompassing tasks, but there's six tasks in there. What I would kinda like to see us do, if I can, is to refocus that just a little bit. I think they've laid out an extremely good program to apply it to the entire city as a framework for all city decisions, purchasing, the whole thing. That, basically what we do is we, with a little bit of tweaking in this to make it more appropriate to say it's a citywide program, that we modify this, this proposal, or the, we modify the resolution so that we create a citywide initiative called Sustainable Sebastian, and let it become kind of the framework for all city operations. When purchasing, buy something, they look at whether their purchasing program fits these individual components of that initiative. That's part of the reason why they need to be reworded a little bit. And that we integrate this into the entire city operations. Now, we have to do that without adding additional approval levels, we have to be careful about adding staff, we have to do that in such a way that it works with our processes. But I see us using this as a, as a tenet under which we do our new comp plan revision. We may even wanna think about a comp plan element for, for environmental issues. I see us doing this, we take a look at, at land development code modifications, particularly the landscape ordinance, which I'm not sure that I was, was in, I think I was in diapers when we first started talking about landscape changes in the city, you know, then that's a long time ago. So I see us doing that. I'm not thinking about refocusing this, refocusing this because of anything to do with the Natural Resources Board. I think they've done a great job. I think we have an opportunity, though, here to establish a framework under which we operate the whole city. We can't, we can't turn around the environment on a dime, it just doesn't happen that way. An awful lot of that is individuals and the things that they choose to do. The manufacturer of plastic straws doesn't put microplastic in the Arctic. It's individuals who do that because they don't dispose of plastic straws correctly. So we can do education, we can do that stuff. However, we can establish a pretty sound framework for the city of Sebastian on the city's practices being as, being as helpful towards maintaining a good, solid environment as possible, and I see this initiative as an opportunity to do that. And so that's, that's what my proposal would be. I'm not gonna make that in form of a motion. I wanted to bring that out before we had comments from the public to see how people feel about that, but I think, I think we've got the beginning of a really good structural program to make a framework under which we operate the city. And it's gonna be a lot of work on everybody's part, it's not gonna happen overnight. It may happen in my lifetime, it may not, I don't know, but it's not gonna, it's something that's not gonna happen overnight, but it's the beginning of the process to do that. Thank you.
All right, thank you very much. Council, anything before we get to public input? All right, is anyone, anyone from the public who should speak on this issue? All right, seeing none. I agree, I, I do agree. Oh, I'm sorry. Oh, please, yeah.
You're from the public.
Yeah, come on.
So I, maybe just to get clarification on, on kind of what you were thinking in terms of the resolution?
I'm sorry, we gotta do name and where you're from.
Okay, so, yeah, Nikki Moszblak, 873 Gilbert Street. So are you, are you thinking that this is something instead of, just kind, that you're actually thinking more broad than what we have here essentially, or?
Think a mission statement. So take the first one, for example. In here, it says, it says as follows. Brevard Beautiful's litter quitter and surf riders' ocean-friendly program through the identification of alternatives. What we might do is rework that to say, partner with associations that can provide us assistance in implementing these types of things. And then the next step for definitely net one might be to go back to the Natural Resources Board and have the Natural Resources Board continue forward with that process that they're working on. The next one where it says, support landscape practices, it may, it may not need to change that because that, that right there could be applied to all of our, all of our ordinances. We could say, does the ordinance fit lagoon-friendly lawns? Does it fit Florida-friendly landscape programs, for example? So there might be a need to make some of these a little bit more general rather than specific so they can be applied like a mission statement would to the activities and actions that take place within the city. So.
Gotcha. Okay, so more guidelines instead of specifics.
Yeah. Does that sound reasonable to you?
I think so. Sorry, this is very foreign to me, this, this back and forth. But I, I mean, that's, that's our overall goal. I think that, you know, what we're trying to do is the same as what you were saying, that we're, that within this framework, we're moving towards that.
Okay.
So it's making it more practical for, for youth by the city, as opposed to just, you know, putting out a statement, just putting out a statement and saying, this is what we think, and then putting it on a desk or a shelf, but to make it practical for the city to actually use this as a framework, like you said.
And to give Mr. Carlyle one more challenge in his life.
Yeah, he doesn't need that.
He doesn't need anymore, but we'll give him one.
Sure. Well, well, so, so the wording on this, were you, were you considering making changes to the wording of this document prior to the passing?
I don't think we should do that tonight. I think what we should, what we should do is ask the staff to view these statements from the perspective, go back and maybe, maybe even go back to Natural Resources Board if they feel they need to do that, to view these statements from the perspective of producing a mission statement, statement type.
Right, so we could pass this, and then staff would take then, we pass this as it is, and then staff could then take this forward and, and plug it into what we're doing at the city. So that we're not just telling people what to do, we're also living by what we're telling people we should be doing.
But that's the first step. The city should be living the program, and then we can talk to businesses about whether they should live the program, and we can talk to individuals about whether they should live the program.
Amen.
Mr. Mayor, if I may.
You may.
We're not trying to set regulation through this resolution. What we're setting is basically goals and objectives, and then as we develop, and maybe even through our strategic plan, we develop goals of how we, we haven't thought about this because this just came out, we set goals of how, when we do different things in the city, that we make sure that one of the things that we checked when I spoke to Mr. Dodd is, does it meet the needs of the city? Is it environmental, all of those things? Because not everything that meets environmental can meet the need, so all those things have to be balanced, and I think that this is a good framework to start with, but then we need to start, it's gonna be, as Mr. Dodd said, it's gonna be a long-term process to develop the goals, the objectives, and protocols for all those different departments. If that makes sense.
Right, so the gist of it is, is for our friends on the Natural Resources Board, we appreciate your hard work, we think this is wonderful, and we're gonna use it in the city, and so we're just trying to figure out ways to plug it into the city, so, excellent. Anyone else in the public who should speak on this issue? All right, seeing none. Can I get a motion?
Move for approval?
Second.
Anything further from council? All right, hearing none. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Dodd.
Yes.
Councilmember Avino.
Yes.
Councilmember McPartlin.
Yes.
Mayor Hill.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Kitchen.
Yes.
Motion carries, thank you.
All right, outstanding, great job, bye all.
Get to work, guys.
Yes. Item, item 12C, authorized city attorney recruitment announcement. Fortunately, I spoke with Mr. Stokes at the last meeting, and he had informed me that he would be providing us with his resignation based on his love of the city, not on his lack of love, because he knows that his busy work schedule makes it very difficult for him to provide the services he believes that Sebastian may be needing coming forward. So it's unfortunate that, that Mr. Stokes has done that, but I do appreciate the fact that he has. So we have to go forward with the recruiting process now, and we have an agenda item this evening to start that process. Mr. Carlyle.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, in, in speaking with the city attorney, and obviously the clerk, and the police chief, we came up with this, this quote-unquote job description or duties for the city attorney, but before we get into that, I think that, you know, we've had Mr. Stokes here, and there's a lot going on, and he's done a great job, but I think it may be time for the city to consider having a full-time in-house attorney. I think that's the first thing we need to do, because it's just, there's just a lot going on with the city. We wanna move it forward. Mr. Stokes, I think, and I'm not gonna speak for him, I'll let him talk about his thoughts on this, but I just think from a, from a city standpoint, with all of the things going on, I think it would be beneficial to do that. And then with that being said, look at what we have all collaboratively put together on the description, and let us know if that's something that you want to consider as well.
Mr. Stokes?
Yeah, I mean, my two cents here is, is I do agree, and I spoke with Mr. Carlyle about this, too. You know, with, with me being here two days a week, I will tell you that the workload does exceed that. There are a lot of projects that I've been meaning to get to for well over a year, and a lot of you know that because you're waiting for them, you're waiting for the information back on the liens and some of this other stuff that are just sitting there on my table or on my desk, because when I do get here, there's just so much going on. I, I would definitely think that the workload, especially as the town continues to grow and continues to develop, will only be more. The other thing is, I do think you will recruit, you'll, you'll have better options in recruitment by offering a full-time job with a salary and benefits.
We won't get stuck with someone like you?
Right. I will tell you what, I've been contacted by some individual attorneys who I do know and are very competent. The initial contacts right after this went out, though, were mostly from firms, because they know of my current arrangement, and they wanted to know if, if council was gonna entertain the thought of doing a firm. That's always an option for council, but it does tend to be a more expensive. You pay more for less, because they're not here as much and are not as responsive. So for the money, I think your, your most bang for the buck would be to have somebody in here full-time, to be available to staff all the time.
Well, I'll just say, council, that I was actually, on council last time, we had a, a full-time city attorney, and I really enjoyed the arrangement we had.
a full-time city attorney and I really enjoyed the arrangement we had. And then, I was also on council when we had a firm.
When we had a actual, we decided that we weren't going to go with a full-time attorney, we were going to go with Mr. Ginsburg, which was, boy, a lucky shot for us because Mr.
Ginsburg happened to be retired and his entire focus was the city of Sebastian. So, we got all of Mr. Ginsburg for a part-time rate. And so, that's not something that's going to happen. I did, I do like the arrangement we had with Mr. Stokes. However, I personally felt that maybe if we had someone here full-time, we maybe could have had some, you know, some things not necessarily done quicker or better. I'm not, I wouldn't say that at all, but I believe that this city requires a full-time city attorney. And I believe that the amount of money it would cost us to get one is not much greater than what we've, we're already paying. It would certainly include benefits that we would have to discuss, but I'm in favor of going forward with the, seeking a full-time city attorney. And I like the framework and the outline that's been set forward by the city manager going forward. Now, I do say that I think Mr. Carlisle's timeline is pretty aggressive in the email you sent us.
Yeah.
I'm sorry, Mr. Stokes.
It was not.
I'm sorry, it was very aggressive, but I also appreciate the fact that Mr. Stokes will stay on until we have something in place. You made that statement, so.
Yes, and that's not a problem, I definitely will. And, Mr. Carlisle, I talked about that. If we tried to stick, if you did try and stick with that structure, the one change that I would suggest is, rather than having a closing date, is to change that to an open until filled. Because even if you did a first review of early submissions, you might find somebody in that batch, you might not, and you'll want to go to, you know, further candidates.
Yeah, so, from my standpoint, I would just go ahead and move forward and authorize the city manager to go forward with the schedule that he's established with an open end to the recruitment process. That's a motion.
Is the notice the one that's on 53 of our agenda packet that you plan on putting out?
So, the notice is already going forward.
That was actually a motion. So, I want to go ahead and, is there a second to that motion?
I'll second that motion.
Okay, thank you.
Now, let me ask a question. Is there, I'm sorry.
So, it's quite a, no problem.
Is there, the notice is on page 53 that you plan on putting out?
Yes, this is, this is a list of the job description, basically the job duties. Mr. Stokes has put together a job notice that has already went out to the Florida Bar and we can piggyback off of his for the ad with a link that will bring them back to this page for the duties. And then, we can, they can determine if they want to apply and send their resumes and background to the city.
But the reason I ask is, reading this city full-time contractual, it reads almost like we would be well within our rights to reject any firms that apply to that, because it basically says, a full-time contract, full-time person on staff does this, does this, does this. So, if firms do apply, we could almost just say to them, we're not interested in the firm applying.
True. And if you want to cut it off from them even applying, maybe instead of saying full-time contractual, to just say full-time in-house and they'll know what that means.
I mean, I'd rather, I'd rather personally have the full-time in-house.
Yeah, I would rather do that as well.
I agree with that. So, we need to change the motion, then?
No, no, I think you change this thing.
The only reason I put, if I may, Mr. Mayor, the only reason I put full-time contractual is because it'll be a contract as you have with me because of the charter. But we, that's, that doesn't have to be in the ad, we can take that out. But that was the only reason it was in there.
Okay.
My motion was for the city manager to go forward and provide whatever it is he needs to in order to get this position filled, on the show filled.
I'm sorry.
With the help of Mr. Stokes.
The one issue, even when I went to put the ad in the Florida Bar, and what I did is I sent that out to the local, there's a local government section of the Florida Bar, anyone who practices in this area is connected through that. And even when I contacted them, they did want to know a salary range. And a lot of the calls I'm getting are wanting to know a salary range. It might be premature to throw this on you, but it might be something that you want to give some thought to and maybe take up at the next meeting or talk, you know, to the manager about, you know, what salary range you might be willing to look at, because that is a question. People, you know, as you all know, if you're looking at giving up a job to apply for a new job, you want to know, is that up? Is that down? Is that a lateral move? So.
And I think that's reasonable that we would have that discussion. I think it was reasonable that we would put a salary range in there and, you know, if we were to get some comparable salaries from comparable cities in the area, we could probably make a determination on that. So, probably bring it to us at the next meeting.
Yeah, we could work, we could work up a little bit of a salary survey for you of like comparables.
Perfect. Anything else from council?
No.
Anyone from the public who should discuss this issue? All right, seeing none, thank you. Roll call, please.
Councillor Avino.
Yes.
Councillor McPartland.
Yes.
Mayor Hill.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Kitchen.
Yes.
Councillor Dodd.
Yes.
Motion carries, thank you.
All right, thank you very much. Item 12D, award three-year banking services agreement to Seacoast Banking Corporation of Florida. Mr. Carlisle.
Mr. Mayor, this was a RFP that our purchasing agent put out. The timeframe to do that had come where the contract was expiring. We received two bids, one from Marine Bank and one from Seacoast Bank. And the selection committee, again, had went through the process, scoring and rating them, and they ranked them number one, so we would ask you to award that bank to Seacoast, the contract to Seacoast Bank.
All right, thank you, Councillor. What's your pleasure on item 12D?
I move approval.
Second.
I motion for a second. Anyone from the public who should speak on this? Seeing none, roll call, please.
Councillor McPartland.
Yes.
Mayor Hill.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Kitchen.
Yes.
Councillor Dodd.
Yes.
Councillor Avino.
Yes.
Motion carries, thank you.
All right, thank you very much. Item 12E, award right-of-way swale ditch mowing service contract to STS Maintain Services, Inc., in the amount of $277,700. Mr. Carlisle.
This is another contract, the current contractor did bid on the project, but just about, almost tripled the cost. This company came in at about the same cost that the original contractor was doing the job for. That contract has obviously expired and we need to get this person on board to get them mowing, is a little bit out of hand right now. So, we'd ask that you would award this to STS. They met the qualifications, they met the minimum standards and are ready to go to work. So, STS Maintain Services, Inc., in the amount of $277,700.
Pretty shocking to me that we would go with this one instead of the other one. I'm not sure, the $970,000.
Well, we did a change to the current guy who bid $620,000 because the vendor wasn't doing the job. So, we went to the new, that's the guy, and this is not anything you were involved in, but, and then he comes back with 620. And actually, the ditches have been looking pretty good. So, does he know something that this other guy doesn't know? And are we going to get ourselves back into a situation? It always disturbs me when somebody, there's that big of a disparity between the bids on construction or type of proposals like that. What does he know that we don't know or what does somebody, and are we going to find six months from now or eight months from now that we've got a lot of really bad swale ditches because they're not really getting cut because we gave it to someone who bid this low? I'm just, I'm asking that just so I.
And so, they vetted them out and I can tell you, they checked all their references and they took them around and showed them the ditches. And so, we can, we can only go by what they tell us they can do. I mean, and the references all check out, they got state contracts. So, we can only make the best estimate based on the reference checks, based on their past performances with other companies, that they've done it, and the fact that they were taking around and showing what was needed. So, we, it could always happen, but we, you know, at a $300,000 or $400,000 difference in price, we have to at least give them the opportunity.
And we have an out.
We have an out.
Okay.
And, yeah, and it's really, I mean, Mr. Carlisle's responsibility to manage that contract, so.
His hair is gray.
Because my brain was full of Afghanistan, my gray matter.
That's right. Just one more thing for him to manage.
That's right.
What's your good people?
Why he gets paid the big bucks.
What's your pleasure, council, on item 12E?
I'll move approval.
I will second that. Anyone from the public who should speak on item 12E? Yes, ma'am.
Linda Masterson, Laurel Reserve. Similar questions as you about the issue, but the only thing you didn't address is there, in the agreement, there's a comment about Schedule C, which is the pricing, and there is no Schedule C listed in the package. If you look at paragraph 12, it talks about per-unit pricing noted in Exhibit C, and there is no Exhibit C.
She must not have included the bid sheet in there, but that's in the bid, in the bid sheet.
Exhibit C you're talking about?
Yeah, there's none in the package.
What page are you going?
Page 242.
Mm-hmm.
Paragraph 12. At least I couldn't find it, so I guess I have a question around that. Because it looks like there might be some amendments and a lot of times, contracts that come in very low-priced will then have amendments and the ability to kind of up-charge a lot of stuff. And so, their 242 might be a lot higher. So, it's just a question, thank you.
Good. Thank you very much, ma'am. Anyone else from the public who should speak on this? All right, hearing none, thank you.
Yes.
Are you, you've gone through this, this has been vetted and you're very comfortable that there's no issues with this? And item, paragraph 12, did you, did you just read that?
No, I haven't read it. I was looking to see if Schedule C was in there, but there's no change orders allowed in this contract. I mean, everything can always be negotiated, but we did not allow for any contracts.
No pricing can be changed without consent of the city?
If it's within 15%. But this contract, the Schedule C was the mowing of certain ditches, there was a certain number of right-of-way cuts, nine times a year for the different cuts. So, that's, that was the bid sheet, and I don't know why it wasn't included in there.
So, that just probably was just not actually included in there.
But it's a total bid.
Are you talking about page 214? Is that the thing you're talking about?
242.
Oh, the, 214 is the one that's got the amount of cuts and the number of times per year they're going to cut certain types of.
Yeah, that's right, seeing 214 has the schedule.
Yeah, that's what I'm wondering, is if it's labeled Appendix A, but is it?
So, those are the cuts and that's, that's what we, that's what we're talking about.
Okay.
And that's how you come up with the total price, by the number of cuts.
He even breaks it down per price and how many times and the total bid is all in that 214.
Yeah, that's the way we've always bid it.
Okay. Any other questions from council? All right, seeing none, roll call, please.
Mayor Hill.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Kitchen.
Yes.
Councillor Dodd.
Yes.
Councillor Avino.
Yes.
Councillor McPartland.
Yes.
Motion carries, thank you.
All right, thank you very much. Mr. Stokes?
Couple of things. At the last council meeting, council went ahead and authorized that we retain outside counsel to deal with the writ petition that has been filed by the Audubon Society in addition to the 164 process that the county has initiated over the annexation. Mr. Carlisle and I actually did telephone conferences with two different firms, local government firms. My recommendation, and Mr. Carlisle agrees, although I won't speak for him, is to go with a firm called Wyserota Healthman, Cole &amp; Beerman. They're a local government firm, a very large local government firm out of South Florida. They have like 70 attorneys, they represent over 75 cities, counties, school boards, housing authorities, MPOs and TPOs and the like. Because they are a South Florida firm, when I talked to them and negotiated a proposal, they did agree that they wouldn't charge us for travel time. They actually said that they know nobody likes paying that dead air time, so, so they said they'd just have their attorneys return phone calls to other clients or whatever while they're driving. So, we will pay at the hourly rate for them to handle the matters, but not the travel time. So, the attorney, specific attorney, who Mr. Carlisle and I both liked, is named Dan Abbott. He's a longtime local government attorney, used to be the city attorney for the city of Hollywood, and has, and since joining the firm, has handled several other cities. And he's very knowledgeable in all the law that goes along with annexations and very comfortable that he would represent us well in that. So, unless there's any objection, they did send a retainer agreement and we, he's already kind of started, he's looked at the petition, he's looked at the appendix, he's looked at everything that we've got, so, so he's already running with it. Along that vein, the county, the 164 process, we're in a very unique situation and I don't want to talk any strategy or substance about these because it is pending litigation. Because we have the 164 process with the county, which we have to go through, then, as you all know, first the city manager and the county administrator meet, try and work it out, failing that, then the council meets with the county commission, try and work it out, failing that, then they could proceed with a court case. But the Audubon Society, which isn't governed by that chapter, they only had 30 days to file a writ petition and they did do that. So, so we've got a pending case challenging the annexation while at the same time, we've got this dispute resolution process we need to go through. And the first stage of that is currently set for October 31st, which is when Mr. Carlisle and myself will meet with the county attorney and the county administrator. The problem that's arisen with that is, my advice to Mr. Carlisle and to all of you, as you always know, is, we don't talk about pending litigation in public. So, if we go to that meet on October 31st, we're going to be engaged in a discussion, we're going to be engaged in, you know, a very public discussion, because they've scheduled it in one of their large rooms because they're anticipating all the people that we saw here very likely being there, including the Audubon Society and their attorneys. So, it puts us in a bind. I spoke to the county attorney about it today, kind of suggested that they stay the 164 process. He was resistant to that, thinking that nothing that was, would be said would be detrimental and he'd get the attorney for the Audubon Society to agree not to use anything he hears. Not sure we can count on that. So, basically, my, what, my next step, my suggestion or recommendation and opinion is that we go ahead and send a formal correspondence to the county saying that because of the unique situation we're in, we want to stay the 164. The county loses no rights, they're not prejudiced one bit because it's not like this will time out for them, it puts it on hold. I mean, they can file their writ petition a year from now if they want to, once we get this back on track. So, I want to tell them that we want to stay it and if they refuse to stay it, it has to be a mutual agreement to stay it. If they refuse to stay it, then we will show up on October 31st, but my advice to Mr. Carlisle will be that we don't say anything. So, it would kind of be a futile thing. So, that's the direction that I want to go with this, the 164 process. There's going to be pushback, I'm sure you will be hearing from, you know, residents or county commissioners or whoever complaining that if we, if we are forced to go, that, you know, we refuse to cooperate. And that's why I felt it necessary to let you know of the very unique legal conundrum we're in because of the two things, one that's.
I'm sure you don't want me to, I'm sure you don't want me to comment publicly about this, right?
Yeah.
Because, because I can certainly do that right now.
No, I, the only thing that I would, would ask you to talk about is procedurally whether you want us to go to the 164 process and participate, even though we'll be discussing it in public, or whether, you know, you're okay with my approach, which is advising Mr. Carlisle not to speak at that process.
I'm 100% in favor of that and I'm certain that our friends at the county would, would want the process to be as fair to the citizens of Sebastian as it can possibly be, as this is the citizens of Sebastian that we're talking about here. So, I think it's a pretty good idea to petition the county and let them know the position good idea to petition the county and let them know the position they're putting us in, the citizens of this community. And then if, in fact, they do require you guys to go to their dog and pony show, then you can sit there and say no comment to their questions based on the fact that we have pending litigation.
If, if we go and we can't comment, then there's no reason for that process that the state has mandated. So I would think that our approach, of course, should be, we want to be honest in our approach to this process. We can't be until this litigation is taken care of.
Correct.
I mean, I, I think that's our position, is as straightforward as it can be. We want to be honest to the approach, but we can't until the litigation is taken care of. And so I don't think you have any choice. If you're forced to go to that meeting on the 31st, you have no choice but not comment. And if we're forced to have a joint session of the council and the commission, and the litigation has been straightened up, we're going to be forced to not comment.
Correct.
Okay.
Is there anything legally we can do to stay this with the county? Like file something ourselves?
That would be the other thing, is I could go and possibly even go with the judge that we're already in front of with the one and say, you know, because of this, Your Honor, we would ask you to give us an order staying it. So that is another approach.
If there are timeframe on the litigation, my understanding is that there's a certain amount of time that we, that we have to respond to the Audubon Society, and then that's kind of decided. Is there something where we can hopefully be able to say in your, in your request that we stay it, that we're hoping this can be done within the next boom days or...
Yes. The, the judge has already issued an order to show cause early this week, Monday or Tuesday of this week, giving us 60 days. So the clock is ticking. This, this matter will be fully briefed by, by early December. I would say, you know, the whole thing will be wrapped up probably right around the first of the year.
Okay.
So it is, it's not like traditional litigation where you could be anticipating and going on for the next two years. I mean, this, it's, it's an appeal process and it's a very short timeframe.
So unless something really dramatic happens, we would be looking at probably trying to hold the first meeting in that, in our, our process with the county sometime in mid-January.
Sometime in January.
Yeah, okay. And that's not such a great time to delay it. I would hope that we could work that out.
All right. I will circle back around with the county and hopefully get them to agree so I don't have to get the courts involved. So...
But there is that pending. There is the, if they did, if they say no, then we do have the option to go to the judge.
We do have the option to go to the judge. And I will tell you, you know, something that they always taught us in law school is unilateral action is fraught with peril. So if we just say we're not going to do anything, it's, it's more risky than getting a judge to tell us that, that we're on solid ground. So, so I would think that that would be a good, you know, avenue to get the judge to issue an order that we do not have to participate. Because the 164 process is a statutorily required process. So if we're going to unilaterally want to put that on hold, we probably should get a judge to bless that.
Okay.
One last item is we have a board member, a member of the Natural Resources Board who is incarcerated. I believe you all know about this, so I don't want to necessarily talk about it a lot in public. But there is a process in our code for removal of board members. Generally, when things come up, we try and get the board members to resign. But because he's still incarcerated, I haven't been able to talk to him. What our code specifically says is that upon the direction of a majority of council, a notice of removal shall be served on the member, gives him a number of days to request a hearing in front of you to challenge it, or he could voluntarily resign. I would ask at this point if, if we could get consensus or a motion from a majority of council, whether you would like me to pursue that and ask him to step back from the board until his legal issues are cleared up.
I don't know about the rest of the council, but I certainly would like you to.
I think by consensus would probably be more, most appropriate at this, this phase of the meeting. So.
That would be fine.
Any objections?
Okay, with everybody.
You could imagine my, my very comment. So.
Anything else?
Okay. All right. Well, I'll, I'll take care of that immediately. So, thank you very much. That's it.
All right. Thank you. Mr. Carlisle?
So I want to let you all know that we have hired a public works slash engineer director. He'll be here tomorrow if you want to stop by and say hi. And he's got a lot of qualifications. The staff that, we all had an interview panel, was very excited about it when we were done with the interviews. So we're really looking forward to him coming onboard. He's got a lot of background in municipal, county work. He works for a private engineering firm now. But one thing that he does have is an environmental engineering degree for water. So I'm going to have him look at my report as I'm finishing it up, and he'll be an outside third party to look at it and see, and make recommendations. So I think that's going to be exciting too as we work this, this glyphosate report through the process. So it gives us another set of eyes on it. So, but we're real excited about him starting. And like I said, he'll be here tomorrow doing his orientation. He's actually going to start tomorrow. He was going to start on the 14th, but he said, I'm already going to be there, so I might as well start.
Nice.
So his name's Ken Griffin, and he's, he's a, I think we're going to have another good, good employee for the city.
Can you, can you repeat that one part about he has a degree in...
Environmental water quality and environmental resource.
And, and what are we doing? We're hiring him?
We're hiring him.
Thank you.
We hired him.
And we're still looking to the late November timeframe to try to talk about the overall report.
Yeah, like I said, we've got the majority of it. There's some, some pieces we're still working on. We're testing a product right now that is showing some promise. Brian Ben has, has, has got a couple of products out there that he's looking at that are environmental that's, we're going to see how they work, showing promise. So we're going to, we want to incorporate that, those results into that report. And also, I'm really looking forward to having somebody who hasn't, he's been in Tampa, he hasn't been here, he hasn't heard all of the, the, going back and forth. So it's going to be a neutral set of eyes looking at my report and saying yay, nay. And it's going to take him some time to review it. It's, it's not a...
Okay.
It's, it's a good point. So that's all I have.
That's it?
That's it.
All right. Thank you very much. Ms. Williams?
All right. Thank you very much. That leads us to council matters. I have one issue this evening, counsel, I'd like to discuss with you. The census coordinator has approached me for the 2020 census. That's incredibly important for municipalities, local governments, the state governments, because the census determines the amount of money you're going to get from the federal government. So we want to make sure that every single person in the city of Sebastian is counted. My responsibility in that is to form a, let me see what this is called, a complete count committee. So the city of Sebastian will have a complete count committee if, if there's no objections from this council. It's not a governmental committee. It's not under the sunshine. It's just a committee of folks who meet and, and try to come up with solutions and work with the census coordinator to, to try to make sure we get everyone counted. I said I would form that committee, so I will ask a city council member to chair that committee. If I could get, I'm going to ask Mr. Avino, if you're not too busy, if you could chair that committee for me.
Sure.
And the census coordinator will work with you to, to get you the information that you need. And then I would ask any of the council members that if you have somebody that you would like representing, representing you, or if you know someone who would be interested in, in working on this committee. It's an incredibly important committee so that we can make sure that all of the people are counted, so that we can make sure that we get the federal dollars that we need. And it also has to do with the, the distribution of, of seats on Congress. And so it's really, it's incredibly important. A lot of easy ways to do it this year. You're going to, you're going to be able to do the census online. So that's really cool. But there's going to be a lot of events and a lot of things going forward over the next several months so that we can make sure we get that counted. If there's no objection to that, I very much appreciate that. And then if we can work through the clerk, if you guys have someone that may be interested in getting on that, if you could just give that to the clerk, and then she could forward that on to Mr. Avino, you're okay with that?
Absolutely. Yep, I'd be glad to.
And then we'll get that committee going. All right? And that's all I had this evening. Vice Mayor Kitchen?
Yeah. I got an email from a gentleman that lives at 614 Southeast Street. He said a bunch of his neighbors were cited by code enforcement for not maintaining their swales. And he believes it's our responsibility to take care of the empty lots. Do the owners of the empty lots get the same citation or just the developed lots?
So the empty lots will get cited. We do go in there and armadillo them out, not every year, but we go in there and, and, and open them up just like we do when we get complaints about the overgrown vegetation. But they will get cited, and we will go in there and do it. And just like we do with the removal of the vegetation, they'll get billed for that.
Okay. So, so even the, just the vacant lots, or will you be citing that, will you be doing it on the residents as well?
We don't do it on the residents' lots unless it's part of the road project. We don't, so if we're doing a drainage project in conjunction with the paving, we do the, all the drainage. But if it's an individual lot and the property owner didn't maintain it, they get cited and they have to maintain it.
And when do you anticipate the armadillo work being done? Because they only have 10 days to get their portion done, and it won't do any good if the empty lots aren't done.
I don't know what Phil's schedule is on that, but there's, there, I don't know what his schedule is in getting in there with the armadillo. I don't have the answer to that.
I thought we mowed the empty lots.
We mow them. But this is where the, over time, it fills in.
Yeah, okay.
Even where, even on the empty lots we have floored around.
Okay.
So.
Okay, thank you. I'll get back with Mr. Bowden.
Anything else, ma'am?
No, sir. I'm done.
All right. Thank you very much. Mr. Dodd?
Nothing.
Councilmember Avino?
Nothing.
Councilmember McPartlin?
No, sir.
All right. Thank you. There being no further business, we are adjourned.